Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to March 7th, 2018, meeting of Danville County Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your attendance. As tradition, we'll begin our meeting in prayer. For God and Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and all the blessings of it. We thank you for the health you've given us and letting us arise another day. We pray that we live this day according to your will and in your service. Pray that you be with us as commissioners this day, that decisions we make be the betterment of this community and for all those involved. Continue to pray for our servicemen and women who are serving our country and risking their life to protect us and provide us the freedoms that we enjoy. We thank you for those freedoms, the safety and protection you've given us. Thank thee for this community we live in. Continue to watch over and care for us, guide, guard, direct us in all things. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. First item on the agenda is to approval of minutes of February 7th, 2018.
Minutes for approval.
Gentlemen, we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Susie Second, question, discussion on the motion to approve minutes. Hearing none, all in favor?
Votes unanimous.
Item D, financial report. Any comments on the financial report, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Terry moves, we approve.
Second.
Jeff Second, question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Votes unanimous, I think. Item E, letters of credit.
Just a small typo on the agenda. That letter of credit expires September. Let me grab my book here. This is a renewal. Renewal for Barry Metcalf. And it says it expires 3/31. It actually expires 9/30/18. And it's a six-month kind of extension. He anticipates to be done by June, but he posted us, again, a new letter of credit for six months.
Where's this for, Stephen?
Center Estates, his apartments. He's on his third building back there. What's left to do is a little portion of the sidewalk and some drainage cleanup. So we're holding a $130,000 letter of credit.
It expired in 17, right? Not 18?
Let me look at the letter here.
See, it would be in June if it was 18.
18.
This year, yeah.
Expires this year, 2018. Did I say 17?
No, he said 18.
18, yeah. Expires this year. If you look at the letter of credit, it says on it, it will expire 9/30/2018. It's dated 3/31/17 because he actually posted it last year and the bank gave him a year extension, and the bank just came in and did another six months, but left the start date the same. So in a sense, it's become an 18-month letter of credit. But they actually brought a brand-new one in dated, but for some reason, the start date still shows as 3/31/17. So it expired 3/31/18, and he's now got a six-month extension to 9/30/18. But again, he anticipates being done by June, he said. And when he's done and final inspection, we go out and look at the sidewalk, the road, and the drainage, then we can probably release that letter of credit, hopefully in the summer. And the latest would be in September.
Your motion to approve?
Right.
Susie moves, we approve. Vince Second, question, discussion on the motion to approve the letter of credit for Barry Metcalf. Hearing none, all in favor? Votes unanimous. Item L, subdivision plat approvals.
I reviewed the plats. The first one is Ratliff, and that went through technical review. It's in the southwest corner of Boyle County. Pretty simple, one parcel created off the Ratliff property. All changes have been made, and it's technically correct.
Terry moves, we approve. David Second, question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Votes unanimous. Thank you. Number two, Stephen Judy Elswich.
This was brought in, and we just did an in-house technical review for this. It's past Parable on White's Road, and just created one tract off the Elswich property. EG&amp;E made all the changes, and it's correct. And Jerry has the corrected copy.
Make a motion to approve.
David approved, makes a motion to approve, I'm sorry. And Jim Second, question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Votes unanimous.
We have one more minor plat. It's the All Miller property located on Parksville Cross Pike. They pretty much created two more tracts off the All Miller property. All corrections have been made, and we did a technical review in-house.
Motion to approve.
David, is that you, David?
Yeah.
David moves, we approve. And Mary Beth Second, question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Votes unanimous. We did it with number four, Jenny?
No. But it's pretty much just a preliminary plat, but it's in a college. It's a renewable. Mr. Leakey requested that that block is going at college, he renewed for one more year.
Let me make a comment on that, too. That's the eighth year in a row, by the way, in talking. Kind of follow-up from our last month's stuff on these preliminary plat renewals. And I have this master list here. Some of them go back and have 30-some renewals. This is eight years. So it's just, as we move forward with preliminary plat review, you know, again, this kind of annual renewal process just seems to be a bit dated. I would think that preliminary approvals would last five or 10 years one time and have to come back yearly and ask for renewals. Or at some time, there should be a cap, like I think we talked about last month, at some point. Why do you renew plats 12 years, 15 years, 30 years if there's no activity? But that's all this is, is a request to renew the plat for another year, just to reserve the right to continue to plat the block if they choose so. So this is number, this will be number nine, technically.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Terry moves, we approve. Mary Beth Second, Stephen, is there at some point where we say that's the last one, or how do we deal with that?
This one's an interesting one because it's a whole block. It's just kind of timing when they're ready to, I guess, move some lot lines around. And in the subregs right now, basically lay this as the process, that you get preliminary approval, and it's kind of forever, as long as you ask for it every year. So I think as we amend the subdivision regs and I bring you forward something, I think you even have that draft, my recommendation's probably going to be that when you get preliminary approval, you maybe have five years to do something. And if you don't take any activity in five years, the preliminary approval's by default rescinded, and you have to come back some other day. That would be more normal, just to give them a five-year window, as opposed to come back five years in a row and keep asking for the same approval. That would be just simpler, be it one time. And after six years roll around, it's just gone, and you have to come back and start over. Yes, sir.
Henry, any comment or thoughts on that?
That sounds perfectly reasonable, and there's nothing that would prevent us from doing what Steve's describing.
Okay. Vince?
It seems like, you know, the college is trying to do what's right, to keep renewing.
Yeah, they're doing exactly what's right.
But also, the fact that colleges, you know, having been a faculty for a long time, over 40 years on different faculties, what, they can't plan any more than they're able to at this point, based on the amount of property they have. I mean, when you look at it, when you're trying to expand a college that's expanded almost a third from when I started teaching there. Okay, so the uses of the land, they don't want to do something, I'm sure. I'm just guessing. You might want to talk to somebody about it, who knows more than I do. But I know, from a planning standpoint, having been on planning, inside planning groups, that they have to move very carefully before they commit to doing a project that might not go with the future of what the college is actually going to be able to do. So I think, just like they did with their athletic fields and everything, it was very carefully planned, and, you know, and I tend to trust their judgment on that, you know, because they're working very hard to use the land correctly, as they have in all their projects.
Yeah. This is an interesting one, just because it's a whole block. And all the other ones on, I went, ran out and grabbed the master list. Of all the ones that we have preliminary approvals kind of just in the hopper, going down through 16 years, 21 years, nine years, 18, 20, 30, 23, 11, 17, 29 years, most of those are subdivision plats where we have streets and houses. So what the developer's doing is reserving the right to continue the plating process and bond the streets later. Basically, that's what we're doing. And this one, it's all four blocks, it's all four sides of a city block. Not even sure why it needed a preliminary approval. There's no bond being held on that. To come in and just revise a plat line would be as simple as filing the plat and a couple weeks later getting it approved. But again, there was a preliminary approval that just every year has just been requested to be renewed. All the other ones were, our streets are involved, they're not built yet, and the developer's doing this so they don't have to bond the streets. So every year, they come and just ask for renewal with the, to reserve the right to extend the street some other day and build more lots.
So maybe, is it, would it be appropriate for us to say that, as you mentioned, that you didn't think they needed that? So would it be appropriate to not, to rescind it until they do need it?
I would think we'd approve.
So they don't have to come back every year to do something that they're not going to do?
I would think some point, we'll just talk to them, and we would approve it and explain to them that at any time they get ready to move a lot line, it's really a minor plat, in my opinion. It's not a major plat. That's the difference.
Steve, am I correct that you've been reaching out to stakeholders, engineers, various people as you've updated these subregs and ordinance provisions?
The draft, we're getting ready to meet with the technical folks, but the draft's only been at the planning commission, you, me. Some other folks have looked at it, but the goal would be to, the preliminary approval would be kind of a one-time. You turn in your construction plans in five years, you've got five years to file a plat, and if not, you start over. This exact one, though, is just more like a minor plat. You should be able to come in at any time. And I'll meet with those guys and maybe explain that to them at center.
You have other questions or comments?
I have one.
Get ready, Mary Beth.
Steve, you said that the draft version has been shared. I think that was before I came on board.
Yes, ma'am, I'll get you one. Yeah, Articles 1, 2, and 3, there's a draft that went out. The goal is advisory committee would take those up at some point. We just took on our first task, but you guys had a, just really preliminary draft to look at. The goal is then get the technical or advisory committee, and then eventually bring it to the planning commission, the first three articles of the subregs, which would address all the issues we've talked about now for a few months with hunt farms, subdivision, preliminary plats, final plats, construction bonds, reductions, on and on. It's all in those first three articles.
Do we have a timeline on when we think we're going to get that done?
No. It was on the to-do list for the fiscal year, but I think the advisory committee will probably look at it next month or two, and hopefully be to you guys, maybe in spring, or maybe next month, two, three. Kind of this comp plan that was first, it's only an ordinance, it's got some big issues we need to work on, and we can talk about that under new business when we get to the comp plan.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions, discussion? I'm sorry, Wendy?
We've already approved it.
We hadn't voted on.
I'm sorry, okay.
We've just got a motion and a second. All in favor? Votes unanimous. Thank you. Item G, public hearing on Avkev Incorporated Site Plan, Corporate Drive 200.
I'm going to do that one. It's pretty straightforward here. Avkev, if you don't know the name, is the old Caterpillar building on Corporate Drive. And I'm not sure what's happening out there, except that there's been a request to do a small building addition on your site plan. You can see it clearly, it's the gray scaled 5,200 square foot addition on the back of 188,000-plus-square-foot building. The zoning ordinance right now, Section 4.3, says you have to do a site plan amendment if you're doing a 25% expansion or 3,000 square foot, whatever's greater. This is actually a 5,200 square foot on a building that sizes comes out to 2.7%. There's no impact to parking, drainage, landscape, anything related to the site access. But the site plan amendment is required because it is over 3,000 square foot. So they turned everything in as required by the zoning ordinance, and again, there's no impact to the site, other than small building expansion, and some good news, it looks like we're going to have someone reoccupying an existing building in the industrial park. And I don't know who's here for the Avkev folks, but...
Thought you was going to take this off of Milton Hammonds, Danville Company. I'm representative of the general contractor. Owner's not here, he's in Indiana. Plastic injection molding company's coming to the old Caterpillar building, and this is for a dye storage area is what we're adding onto the building. The rest of it, of course, existing building is used as process.
Okay. Stephen, we have the list as a public hearing, so I assume we're going to take comments. So any comments or questions from the commission? Any comments or anyone who wants to speak in favor of this from the audience? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this plan from the audience? All right, well, at least we provide that opportunity, and when the record would show that, that's the main thing, because it's listed as a public hearing. Any other questions or comments or discussion on this item? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Moves we approve.
Jim moves, we approve. Vince Second, question, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Votes unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Under new business, budget committee report. Terry has that.
Right. If you can take out the preliminary budget that's in your packet and open it up. Again, Wendy, Dave, and I have met with Steve and Jenny a couple times since the last commission meeting to finalize the preliminary budget. So everybody turned in, it's already been turned into the city. We need to approve it today. We need to amend it, I'm sure we can, but the city required it to be turned in a couple of days ago. And we'll be turning it to the county soon. And then, of course, we'll wait for it to go through their budgeting process, and we'll be back to the commission in June or July to do a final budget approval. So today, we're just going to, I'm going to give you like a, you know, a 10,000-foot overview of the preliminary budget. I'd ask that you hold your questions till the end, just so we can keep the time down, and then I'll, we'll go back and address any questions you may have. We're only going to be talking to two columns. The third column from the left, that's called fiscal year 18, projected year and return, and the column all the way to the right, which is the budget that we just turned in. And the first thing I'd like you to look for is line number one. Well, yeah, line number one on your far right, it's called the beginning balance. So the year we're in right now, we start off the year with about $98,000, I guess you would say, in our checkbook. And the new budget that we got will start with about $80,000 or about $20,000, yes, and that's because this year, the year we're in, you know, our revenues were about $20,000 less than our expenditures. So that's why our, you could say, our bank deposit balance fell. The next line I'd like you to go down to is line 22, which is total revenue. And again, if you look at the third column over from the left, which is what we're expecting this year, about $204,821, compare that to the budget that we just turned in, preliminary budget, which is about $203,000. So we're forecasting that our total revenue will be down about $1.6,000. And if you go back up to line 3, you'll see that the Boyle County contribution is being held the same at $75,000 this year to the preliminary budget. I mean, the Danville is held the same at $75,000. The Boyle County contribution, we're asking for $5,000 more, so increasing from $65,000 to $70,000. And that's to get their contribution a little closer to the 50-50 split we like to see between Danville and Boyle County, and also to help fund what we're expecting to be a reduction in residential zoning rates. And you can see that down in line 17. And these are zoning permits, the dollar numbers there is for commercial and industrial and residential. But both the city and the county, I think, would like us to see reduce our residential zoning permit rates. We're one of the few regions in the state that even have charge for residential zoning permits, and I think we're among the highest then in the state. And so we would be, one of the things we expect to do in the next budget year is to come forward to the commission and propose a reduction in those rates, and that's why line 17 is less than, in the preliminary budget, than what it is in the forecast for this year. So all those things together wind up with a total revenue forecast that's down slightly from this year. The next line I'd ask you to take a look of is way down, almost to the bottom, line, would be line 17, which is total expenditures. And again, if you look at the third column over from the left, you'll see that this year we're forecasting total expenditures about $220, $222,859, and the budget is about $9,000 less. At $213,000. Excuse me?
You said line 17, you said 77.
Oh, it's line 77, I'm sorry. Line 77, not 17. Go all the way down to line 77, which is total expenditures. And you can see this year, we're forecasting $222,859, and the preliminary budget we're putting together is about $9,000 less, or about $213,000. And so the next line, I guess, we ask you to take a look of is to go back up to, we'll start, we'll just look at the totals of the major expenditures we're going to have this year or next year. Go up to line 38, which is total personnel. That's the biggest total expenditure in our budget. And if you look at line 38, you'll see that this year, in our, what we're forecasting spend is a little over $181,000 for total personnel. The preliminary budget we put together is about $15,000 less, about $166,000. And most of that reduction is in the salaries and compensation that we pay the employees. And it's really quite practically down that much because this year, we had unusually a high number because we had to pay Paulas, sick days, accumulated vacation days, and that type of thing, and that drove our expenditures up quite a bit this year. And of course, we won't have to pay those next year. The only other line I draw your attention to, under the total personnel, I guess it would be line 80, which is the, yeah, line 80, which is the retirement, you know, the amount of money we have to set aside for Kentucky retirement. I think you're all aware, I'm sorry, not 80.
30.
30. I got my, line 30, which is total retirement. And you can see that this year, we're spending about $23,000 in total retirement. Budget next year is over 30, and that's the mandated state increase for retirement. We're expecting that when that's all said and done, the legislature's going to back off a little, and that number will probably be less, but we don't know that. So right now, it's in there at $7,000 more in the preliminary budget for next year than this year. Next line I would ask you to look at is line 49, which is total office expenses for next year. You can see there about $13,000 this year. The budget next year is a little over 10, so it's $2,000 to $3,000 less in that, and most of that's in office supplies, expected less expenditures in office supplies. Next line would be line 54, which is total travel, essentially no change, so reason, no reason to talk about total travel. And if you go down to line 65, which is total contractual, this is all our contracted services, you can see that that's up about $8,000, from about $26,000 this year to about $34,000 next year. And if we kind of talk down through that, one of the main increases is if you go up to line 64, right above that, you'll see we're going to be paying rent to the city this year. We didn't pay any this year, next year, we didn't pay any this year. We're budgeting $6,700 next year for rent to the city, so that's the big driver of the increase in contractual expenses. The only comments I would make has to do with legal expenditures. We're forecasting legal expenditures to be similar to what they are this year. If there's a pipeline thing, then we would go down to our reserves to pay the legal expenses for that. But there's a chance that we may have understated our legal expenditure forecast because I think we're behind schedule getting all of our bills from our legal counsel for this year, and so we may be getting more bills in than what we're expecting. So this number may have to come up a little, and hopefully that can be offset by decreasing the retirement fund. And then the only other comments I think I'd like to make under the legal, it's probably the largest contractual, it is the largest contractual expense that we have. And so the commission can call our lawyers at any time if they have any questions. I think the finance committee would just recommend that before you call the lawyers, you just check with Steve to make sure that there aren't multiple commissioners calling on the same item, so we don't have to have two or three people checking on the same item. And the second thing, I think it would be the recommendation of the finance committee that, just like audit fees, that we periodically competitively bid our legal service.
Yeah.
Couple more comments, and I'll wrap up. If you go down to line 69, which is non-local travel, there's really not much change to talk about there, so we won't talk about it. Line 75, which is total commission expenses, same thing, no change there, so no reason to talk about that. So again, when you're all said and done, if you look at total expenditures of $213,000 in the forecasted budget for next year, compared to total revenue of 203, we'll be about, you know, nine, we're forecasting to spend about $9,000 more than we have in revenue, which will then drop, if you look at line 78, drop our, I guess you could say, our checkbook or our total reserve from the $80,000 that we expect to start fiscal year 19 with, down to about $70,000. And of that $70,000, if you look down at lines 81 and 82, about $20,000 of that will be set aside for just a normal reserve to, against revenue. And then we've got roughly $50,000 in the bank to take care of any pipeline legal expenses or any construction issues on bonding that we may have. And that's the proposed budget that we've got. Any questions?
Yeah, I was looking at the attorney for the Board of Adjustments, and it's raised three times what they spent last year, so is there a reason for that, or?
You want to comment on the Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, what we did, that's a placeholder. Really, the legal's set at $12,000 for next year, and we've split it six and six because the same legal firm represents both boards. If you look at the projected year-to-date, we're now asking the, Henry and Bruce, to break out the bill and tell us what's Board of Adjustments, what's Planning Commission?
Yeah.
And if you look at the projected year-to-date, you see the split is not a 50-50. But we just put basically $12,000 forward, split it BOA, Planning Commission. Good chance we'll fine-tune that once we get a better run of this year. If it's running 60% Planning Commission, 40% BOA, we'll just split those numbers eight and four. But I think to Terry's point, right now, we're setting it at $12,000 for next fiscal year. And clearly, we're going to be, if you look at the projected year-to-date, we're over 10 already, and we're only through October billing. There's a good chance we might be $15,000, $20,000 this year. And that, again, is, we're scaling that back to 12 next year and try to start with that number, and of course, legal just sort of goes where it goes. If the pipeline stuff comes around, that's why the reserve's there, too. Yeah.
Are you okay with being the gatekeeper for people have legal things, check with you first before?
I think we'll work around whatever. There's going to be situations, I think, we talked about this in the budget committee meeting, where if a commissioner has a conflict of interest or there's a case that comes forward, I think calling the attorney's always probably best that the planning commissioner call the attorney and just run it by. I think what's come up lately is there's just been some stuff about pipeline and the lawyers talking to the lawyers and different folks. I think the best thing to do is just try to manage it best we can. But I'm fine if someone wants to bounce something off me, I'm probably going to say call the attorney most of the time. But sometimes, there's minor stuff that maybe we already know, or it's not an issue. I can think of one situation, a commissioner has already called about conflict of interest. To me, I'm not a lawyer, but when we talked about it, I suggested call the attorney, but as we talked through it, I think we both talked ourselves out of it. When we really walked through it, it was like, no, that's not really even an issue. Think about it. So we probably saved ourselves a couple bucks that day. That's kind of, I think, how we should handle it. I'd be glad to answer any questions, too, if you guys have any specifics. I think Terry just did a great job, and appreciate what the budget committee's done. It is just the preliminary budget, now we just sit it out for a while.
Do we actually decrease our insurance?
Yes.
Not that much?
Yeah, yeah. Last year, it actually was, the budget number was $17,500. We just rebid it. It's going to come in at about, it's broken, too. The workers' comp's up under personnel. That's one of the insurance lines is workers' comp. The other ones are down there under insurance lines, which would be our DNO, our auto, our renters' insurance. So between the two, we're about $7,600 for all our insurance lines. Last year, we paid about $10,400, and we budgeted $17,500. So we've reduced the budgeted number to $10,000. So between the two, we're about $7,600 for all our insurance lines. Last year, we paid about $10,400, and we budgeted $17,500. So we've reduced the budgeted number 10,000 to actual number of about 3,000.
Other questions or comments?
I'll make the motion.
Mayor Beth moves that we approve.
Same.
Jeff seconds.
I'd just like to thank Terry and Wendy and who else worked on this?
Dave.
Dave?
Yes.
For y'all's work on that.
Yes.
And Jenny. Did an excellent job, and just want to say thanks publicly for y'all's time and effort to put this together.
And I would second what Stephen said, it looks like you've done an excellent job, and we thank y'all very much.
Questions, discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Both unanimous. Thank y'all very much. Item three, advisory committee report.
Personnel.
Did I skip one?
I'm sorry, skip Personnel Committee Report, I'm sorry. All right, check that, that's why I skipped it. Personnel Committee met last week, I think it was, and the preliminary discussion, or the only discussion, was the evaluation of Steve and how he's doing, and I would just report generally that we are pleased with his job performance, and we gave a few suggestions for improvement, but overall, the information provided to Stephen was very complimentary, I think, and very positive and appreciative of the work that he's been doing, particularly the fact how he has simply just jumped in and taken hold of things, and certainly working to make our office as community and friendly as possible. And certainly, I think we're on the right track to creating that image that we've been asked by the city commission and county to try to get it more customer-friendly, and I think we're working in that direction and seeing a lot of good things happen in that way. I would say that my personal comment to Stephen was that every comment I've had from the public, customer-wise, or just generally, or from elected officials, have been very positive with regard to what he has done, and I would just say publicly, the advisory committee, Personnel Committee rather, was very complimentary of his work to this point, and just encouraged him to keep it up. Any other comments? Jill for Susie on Personnel?
Captain.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What is the process that we use to get feedback from other board members? Is there a formal process where we provide the committee with?
Process would be, you'd provide that to the committee from my perspective, and whenever we have an advisory, or excuse me, Personnel Committee meeting, if we would take those comments and share them in that meeting.
Okay. Were there any objectives discussed or laid out that you could circulate with us for Steve, so that we kind of know how we're measuring him going forward?
I don't know if we make that public or not.
To the other commissioners?
I don't know if we make the evaluation public or not.
Well, not the evaluation, but like, you know, we want you to do this, and this, and this, in terms of?
Which was part of the evaluation.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the evaluation was formal, it was written, it was signed, it's in my Personnel file now. I would think that's not an open record to the general public.
No, I understand.
But if any of the planning commissioners wanted to see it?
That's what I was gonna say.
Swing by, I'm sure the Personnel Committee doesn't have an issue with any of the Personnel, any?
Yeah, it is in writing, and if you wanted to go in the office and look at it, I think you'd be more than welcome to do so, but it is not record for public record.
Got it, thank you.
It's good, I didn't frame it or anything. It's good, but I can get it for you.
But I think just any other committee, like if I had a question, or Vince had a question about the budget, we'd go to the Budget Committee chairperson and say, Terry, you know, this is concerned, we need to look at this. And I think that it would work the same way with any committee, depending on what that committee is dealing with. So each commissioner is certainly free to make those recommendations, or go with a problem or an issue, and bring it to the chairperson's attention. And then during that committee meeting, the chairperson would address that issue. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, number three, Advisory Committee Report. There we go. You can lead up on that if you want, Steve.
Advisory Committee, our newly-formed Advisory Committee, met for the first time. And again, open session, media was there, it's article in the paper already. What you got was a handout this month, that is the first kind of to-do list, which is an amendment to the Conference of Plan, Chapter Nine. Today, it was more just a handout, so you all could look at it, start to digest that. The plan is to have this as a formal hearing in April. Technically, this is when you amend the Conference of Plan, or if these amendments go forward, we'd be amending our Conference of Plan, just one piece of it. We have to go through the same process like when we adopt a Conference of Plan. So we have a lot of notification requirements, even to adjacent counties, Bluegrass add, there's just stuff you have to do before we can have a hearing on a Conference of Plan as to a regular zone change or whatnot. I'd be glad to walk through this today, answer questions today, do whatever you all want me to do, but today, the idea was just put it in the packet, let you know the Advisory Committee spent considerably time walking through this page by page, as what I hope their role would be, and talking back and forth, and then ultimately, it was decided, put it in the planning commissioners' packets, let you all start to digest it. We'd talk about it today as kind of an open preview, work sessions type vibe, or set it for a hearing next month, and we'll get into it next month. We can do either, it's your all's decision.
I just had a quick question on number 17. I see we changed, page 17, changed what we call their urban service boundary to the sewer?
Yeah, yeah. So again, it's, you guys want me to answer?
Sure.
Jerry, okay, a few of those?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a lot of housekeeping in this Chapter Nine, and the reason I zeroed in on Chapter Nine is about three things. Number one, it's where the future land use map sort of lives in the document, but it's not really there very visibly, as we saw in the past case. And there's a lot of verbiage in here that sort of felt out of place to me as you flow through the document. And there was some stuff that was clearly contradictory that I pointed out before, just in some, again, technical verbiage. And one of those issues was the urban service boundary. And so you're on page 17, and where it was in the document, it has been moved down. It actually came from page?
Three.
Three. And it was called Urban Service Boundary. But clearly, when you look at the big county-wide map, and you saw the dash line, that was a third of the county went down into Lincoln County, it was very apparent to me, that's not an urban service boundary. An urban service boundary is typically, in other communities, we'll use Lexington, Fayette County, for example, they have an urban service boundary, and their county's this big, and their urban service boundary's this big, and their intention is to grow to that urban service boundary for various reasons. And inside that boundary are future land use categories other than agriculture, because that's where they're saying we're growing to here. I looked at our term, urban service boundary, and it was a third of the county, all the way into the next county, and all of the land uses above the flume were agriculture. Well, I said, that's not an urban service boundary, that's something else. Talking with the Public Works Director, what I found out, it really is a municipal utility service area, as designated by the Public Service Commission, it gives Danville authority to provide water and sewer service. So it's termed on our map as an urban service boundary, but I don't think the goal is to grow the county all the way from one border to the next, or we would have put future land use map designation there. So I'm moving it out of the section on page three, and the reason it was on page three is because it's under Danville, yet it's a policy directive, and it needed to go down to page 17. And I'm titling it Sewer Service Boundary, but after talking to Earl Coffey again, he said the technical term really needs to be Municipal Utility Service Boundary. That is actually what that dash line is. So if we adopt this change, we also then would just relabel that on the future land use map, take off the word urban service and put municipal utility service. The verbiage underneath it still kind of works, so I didn't really change anything underneath that. That comes right out of page three. Nothing's changed, it's just re-titled.
Okay.
And I think that's appropriately so, because clearly, I don't think the intention when that future land use map was adopted was to grow Bull County and Danville into Lincoln County, and all the way to the Mercer County line. I don't think. I just think it was a typo on the map, and the word urban service boundary's a trendy term, and they're good to have, but normally, where your urban service boundary is, it's a one-for-one match for future land use, other than agriculture. So it's just a new term.
All right, excellent.
And I'd be glad to answer any other questions. Yes, sir.
Could you explain some about the numbers for growth? It seems the 400 was tilted off.
Well, what Commissioner Board is?
What page are we on?
Page one now, it's not highlighted. Page one of this document is interesting, and this gentleman right here is very astute, obviously, because he's zeroed right in on something that is pretty clear. On page one, in that number two, you see that it says the population of Bull County will grow at a stable but low pace. By the year 2030, approximately 29,126 persons can be expected in the county. So, and then you read on further in that, and basically, what it said is, when this document was crafted, the population projection was that Bull County's gonna grow about 400 people in 20-some years. Well, one of the things I zeroed in on, when I looked at it, I read this document actually before my interview, in fact, and we talked about this. I was curious what the growth projections were. I got on the Kentucky State Data Center site and saw that Bull County's actually intended, is supposed to grow a lot more than that. So there was some kind of number transposed or something, and, but the problem is, the reason I'm not changing any of this to reflect the numbers I saw in the Kentucky Data Center is because Article Two is a whole analysis on population, and the whole methodology in there is just a little off. So I don't recommend we change anything in this page one or two until we fix Chapter Two. And let me just tell you the general, what probably happened. This document was started back in 2010, 2012. In fact, the goals and objectives for the comp plan were actually adopted in 2012, even though you guys formally adopted the plan when it was done in 2017. It's actually time to redo the goals and objectives again, because the five years will be up this fall. So someone must have done some population projection and population analysis back in 2010, 2012. Somewhere between 12 and 17, clearly, there was numbers put out by the Kentucky Data Center that showed Bull County's population, their estimates, and their projections, and none of these numbers match. So either we used the 2010 numbers and 17, and we didn't update it, because actually, if you get on the Kentucky Data Center site today, the population projection for the year 2030 is 32,000 people, and into the year 2040 is almost 34,000 people. That's seven tenths of 1% growth. And the actual Bull County population estimate last year, 2016, was 30,018 people. So we were over the 29,126 last year, as a real number, not a projection. So I don't, again, population projections, there's 10 different ways to do it, but I didn't think we should fix anything in Chapter Nine, unless we just went back and redid all of Chapter Two someday. I don't use it other than just math, and, but I think what's important is to realize we are gonna grow. The projection is just short of 1%. That ends up being about 2,000 or 3,000 people in the next few years, not 400 people. In fact, we've grown from the census number already to, again, 2016 estimate was 30,018 people in Bull, Danville, Bull County today. It's probably a little higher today.
Is it appropriate to put a footnote on there, referencing some of the things we've just said?
We could. I mean, there's reference in Article Two, I didn't put two in frame, but Article Two references the Kentucky Data Center, which is kind of our statewide Census Bureau guru, and it's in all over Article Two, and it talks about population, looks at it historically, does the projections all the way through the year 2040, and then comes up with this number, 29,126, which again, is flat growth, 400 people over 20 years, and I think we've already exceeded that number. I'm obviously one of them. So there's other folks coming here, and I think there'll be growth. And the reason it's in future land is because I guess the methodology here is you talk about future growth, future land, future acre allocation. That's kind of how this whole thing flows downhill, till ultimately, a future land use map. Any other questions on this part? I do want to point out the Perry, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just, the question was just to get you to explain for everybody's information about a question of anything you would do.
Yeah, I could email any of you guys. I downloaded the Kentucky Data Center's 2017 population statistics and their projections for all 120 counties, and I actually just broke out Bull County, and it shows it by age, race, sex, all the different, you know, demographics. And it does show some growth, as anticipated as we all feel, you know? So I can show you that document, and just get you the Bull County stats. And again, that's where that 30,018 number comes from, that's where the 34,000 number comes from in the next few years, 12 years or so. So the other thing I want to point out is those Perryville Future Land Use Maps are in there, which is really the big driver of this amendment. And make sure you guys understood how much hard work, not from me, but from the community in Perryville went into that. And the advisory committee looked at this. Perryville's Future Land Use Map is, the old one is the one that looks like a big yellow circle, and that was the 2017 map, which looked a lot like the 2007 map. And in working with Perryville, I think it was pretty obvious that some future land use categories were missing on their map, and there needed to be some fine tuning. And the biggest thing you notice when you put the two maps side by side is, the new map has parcels on it, has lot lines on it. So when you put parcels onto a map, it's easier to start doing future planning, because you start to realize, individually, we've split a parcel, we, if you look at, we just colored the whole circle yellow in the old Perryville map, and just outside the circle was green. Yet that splits several farmers' properties in two. So by putting the parcels on there and talking to individual farmers, some said, make me residential, and some said, maybe we need back to agriculture. So this new map was literally an exercise at the table with elected officials, citizens, and others, where we literally relabeled the entire town of Perryville, created new categories, put things for the future that they wanted in their town, and that there's a new map. I was just the scribe or the mediator on this, they literally labeled this stuff out. So the plan here is to amend this into the new comp plan, into Chapter Nine, and adopt the new Perryville Future Land Use Map, so that's their guide for the future. And you can tell, see, there's a lot of new categories and land use definitions that are unique, and will work county-wide at some point. So I appreciate what they did, and the goal here is to get that thing adopted sooner than later, so they can start to move forward to that style of development, if there's a zone change, or if there's a development proposal.
Thank you. You all pleased with this? Residents of Perryville?
Residents are very pleased. City Council had, along with Steve and the mayor, had an open house last week, well-attended. I was surprised how many people were there.
That's great.
I expected three, you know, like 30. But yes, I hadn't heard a bad thing about it. Some people were concerned that it was changing zoning, which it's not doing.
Exactly right.
And once that was thoroughly explained, everybody's in favor.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on that, Steve?
Just the hope is, if you guys are okay with this, I'd like to put this on for a formal hearing to amend Chapter Nine. If you guys have any changes, any typos you see, I just saw another one that was my mistake. I want to get this thing right, and we'd be formally amending Chapter Nine and adopting the Perryville Future Land Use Map as a public hearing. And just take note, in this Chapter Nine is now a process on how the future land use maps, all of them, could be amended formally into the future. There's about five kind of big-ticket items in this Chapter Nine, and we'll go through them more formal next month, but give you guys time to digest them. Call me if you have questions. I forwarded this document to the Smart Growth folks, some different elected folks, Earl Coffey's looking at it, so hopefully, everyone's gonna get us some feedback for next month. So it'll evolve a tad bit. Thank you.
Any other questions for Stephen on this?
So we can't do one without the other? We can't amend the?
We could. Sure, could.
Without doing Chapter Nine?
Yeah, yeah, we could just amend the map and not the housekeeping. The problem is, the categories that they're gonna use, those mixed-use categories, go into density-based residential categories, those definitions are in Chapter Nine.
They don't exist yet.
So what we'd have to do, if your goal was not to make some of the changes in Nine, we'd at least have to amend, we have to adopt those categories as terms.
Okay.
And that's really a big chunk of what's in Chapter Nine, is, and just so you know, the old future land use maps, when you see the word residential, commercial, industrial, multi-family, they're not defined anywhere in the Conference of Plan today. They're on the map, but they don't tell anyone what is multi-family. I think we all just know what is residential. Is it single family? Is it attached, detached? Is it patio homes, condos? What is it? There's now definitions in this amendment that defines all the future land use map terms, and they're on the Perryville map, too. I think that's an important addition. Those two have to go together. Stuff about amending the flume, the technical stuff on the urban service boundary, that's your all's call, if you guys adopt it all, or none, or some. your all's call, if you guys adopt it all or none or some.
Anything else on this? Hearing none, the next item's election of officers. And for you folks that are new to the commission, since we elected officers last time, you should have a sheet in your folder that shows the current officers and all the committees, and who's on the committees, and so forth. And what we've done in the past is we've simply accepted from the commission just a nomination for, for Chair and Vice Chair, and then the Chair and the Vice Chair has appointed these committees per the agreement of the individuals, so to speak. And that's the way, way we've operated in the past in terms of electing Chair and Vice Chair. So at this time, I would just say the Chairs, yes.
What are the roles and responsibilities of the Chair and Vice Chair?
Role of the Chair is to conduct the meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as far as I know. The Vice Chair's role is to conduct the meeting if the Chair's not available or has to miss the meeting. The role of Chairman is to appoint those committees, and to meet with Stephen and deal with any issues that, that come up from any of the commissioners or the public or elected officials that we need to address.
Are there any signing or any legal obligations involved?
Well, the Chair signs the checks, signs all the checks, along with the, with the Director. And signs all the plaques. And anything else, Jenny? Is that about everything, Stephen?
Ms. Touchstone, there's a set of bylaws recently adopted, which adds just a little bit to what Chairman has described, so. But not much, I mean, he's pretty much encapsulated.
And are there term limits associated with that?
Yes, we do it every year. I don't know what the bylaws state that, but we, we elect the Chair and the Vice Chair every year.
But there's no limit to how many years you can serve in that capacity, is that right?
Not to my knowledge. I know historically Chairs have served for a number of years, and I wouldn't, wouldn't be able to quote how many that was or has been, but I know they have. Any other questions about the process? So, we are open for nominations for Chair?
I'll nominate you as Chair.
Second.
All right. Jerry Leper's been nominated as Chair by Jim, and second by Vince.
David.
David, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought it was Vince. Do we want to vote on that before we proceed? Doesn't matter to me.
Do you need a motion to cease nominations?
You want to make it?
I will make it.
All right. Motion's been made, cease nominations, Jeff is second. Any other questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? All in favor of a person being nominated for Chair? Vote unanimous, I think. Thank you. For Vice Chair? Floor's open for nominations? Wendy nominates Jeff Baird?
I'll second.
Susie seconds that. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor of Jeff Baird for Vice Chair? Vote unanimous, thank you. As far as the committees, I would just ask individually if there's any committees you want off of, or any committee you want to be assigned to that you're not on. You certainly have that opportunity and privilege at this point.
I will say, I'm on the beautification committee, but it actually is on the same time as another meeting I have every Monday, the first Monday of every month, so it's been really tough for me to try to.
Anybody like to take Wendy's place on the beautification committee?
Jerry, let me just mention, I have been, Wendy lets me know when she can't make it, so I've been attending on her absence, just makes sure Planning Commission Representative is there. And it's an interesting committee, not really my forte, tad bit. So whoever's interested in that, they are a working group. About planting flowers and trees downtown and a lot of stuff. So it's a good group, and they're very active, so I've been there, and I appreciate if someone wants to jump on that committee, but I'm Wendy's backup right now, just letting you all know.
Anybody want, want to take that spot? How often do they meet? They meet monthly?
First Monday of the month.
First Monday?
At four o'clock.
First Monday every month, four o'clock.
Where do they meet?
In the glass room, right here.
Jeff Baird has volunteered.
And that formally has to then go through City Commission to, Jenny, that has to go back to City Commission to be ratified, yeah?
His, his appointment to that?
Whoever your all's appointment to the beautification has to go to the City Commission to be formally approved, yes, sir.
Think you can get through City Commission? All right. Anybody else want to make any changes? If not, I'm going to appoint those committees as, as, as they stand there with, with the change from Wendy to Jeff on the beautification. I will tell you that transportation, even though my name is there for that, we haven't met in at least three years, since the Main Street Diet issue disappeared, the Transportation Committee also disappeared. But it can be resurrected, I guess, if needed. Any other, any other good for the order with regard to the committees? All right, moving on, item five, zoning permits, 2018, January. Anything, Stephen? None. Any other new business anybody needs to bring up?
Yes. I hate to interrupt, but the Hunt Farms, just real fast, Fiscal Court did pass that last week. They did make three little housekeeping amendments. It's already been signed to some degree and executed, but I just wanted to tell you what the amendments were, and I'll, I can pass it down the table. Actually, for example, there was a, a sentence here that said, "The county agrees to take any step necessary to assist getting the state bid contractor." They put the word reasonable in there. Any reasonable step necessary. That's one of the changes. The other one was that when it says they're going to accept the roadway, they added a sentence at the end that says, "In accordance with the county's policies and procedures and approval of the county engineer." That's about the housekeeping. So everything else in that agreement is still the same. Nothing to Paragraph Four changed on the sidewalks, and it was just a couple of words in the agreement. Mr. Hunt's, or Mr. Sharp's signed it, the county judge has signed it, and I've already signed it. I want to just point that out, that there were, they made a couple of housekeeping, and the plan is to get those streets going first of April. Unless you guys have an issue with those changes, Lynn Dean, the county attorney, inserted those changes in, to protect the county.
Thank you, sir. Any other new business?
There was an item in our packet having to do with prayer and public meetings.
Yes.
Is that something we'd like to discuss for a minute?
If somebody wants to bring it up.
Yep.
I'll, I'll talk about it a little bit.
Go ahead.
I think, you know, one of the reasons that people came to this country was because of religious persecution, and, and it seems like we're, we're, when we do the prayer, which I'm not against doing personally, but I have to think about it, and, and a lot of things are excluded from the prayer, from the prayer we use. I mean, I always used to do a moment of silence in my, you know, in school and things like that, and all the school situations I've been in. And even though, like I said, I'm not against saying the prayer myself, but I'm not thinking about me as much as I am other people. So I think we should discuss it, because it is an important part of America, and it's an important part of the history of why people came to this country in the first place. So, I mean, if anybody feels differently than that, I think we should talk about it.
Well, I, I think that people of faith pray frequently, and I think they should be encouraged to pray as often as they find necessary. My concern is that we're a part of commerce that's being done in our community, and it appears to me that the price of admission is to bow your head so that we can pray to the God of our choosing. And I, I really, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with having religion being a price of admission to getting their services done in this community.
Stephen, any comments on where we stand legally on that issue?
I don't hear.
I know.
There's a lot of.
I understand Vince, I'm asking your lawyer to comment on it.
The, the most recent case law that's applicable to us supports the practice so long as it doesn't do some of the things that we've been warning against. If it's used as any kind of exclusionary or harassment method, then that's, that's a problem. You saw in Stephen Dexter's memo, there was one case from South Carolina, doesn't apply to us, but that's, that's a court that found that when people got shouted down for objecting to the prayer, that was problematic, and they had to cease that. As far as praying, even in a particular religious faith, that's been upheld. What some other jurisdictions have done that's been looked favorably upon is to invite members of the public, various people, to come and, and offer that prayer, and sometimes that provides an opportunity for other faiths to be represented. But the, the contents of particular prayers aren't really ever scrutinized, it's more what the, the pattern or practice is.
Is it a requirement in any way that we pray? I mean, is, are there any requirements that we have a prayer in any of our sitting meetings?
I think it's a fact that the United States Congress has a prayer before they, the Kentucky Legislature has a prayer, Danville City Commission has a prayer, the Bull Fiscal Court has a prayer. So I don't know why that would preclude.
Beautification probably doesn't, there are a number of committees that don't.
I just named four very important large names. So I certainly wouldn't think it would preclude us from doing that.
I think our prayer to open our meetings has been a longstanding tradition, and, and one that I, I find very favorable. I enjoy that opening and, and that sort of call to order of our meetings that we have each month.
Well, I've been on the commission since 2005. I don't know if it's good or bad, but my, and I had come to planning and zoning meetings years before that for various reasons, and from my understanding, that, that has been a tradition with planning and zoning for many, many years prior to 2005. If anybody on the commission wants to open with the prayer and do it, you're more than welcome to do so. If somebody wants to make a motion that we continue with the prayer or we discontinue with the prayer, you're certainly welcome to do so.
I support the prayer, I just want to say that. And, you know, I think it's appropriate to seek God, guidance from whichever God you're seeking it from, depending on your beliefs. You know, as a Christian, you know, you know, I, I believe it's important, we make a lot of important decisions, we need all the guidance that we can get. You know, we don't necessarily, in my opinion, have to ask the audience to join in, but just begin the meeting with it, and they can join in by bowing their heads or not. But I'm 100% in favor of it.
So is your recommendation that we not ask the audience to bow their heads when we pray?
If the rest of you all agree to that, yes.
And we didn't this morning.
That's a personal choice. I would move that we continue to open our proceedings with prayer.
Susie moves that we continue with the prayer. Is a motion, Susie, correct?
Yes.
Jeff seconds that. Question or discussion on the motion to continue our proceedings with prayer? Vince?
Yeah, I think, I think if you mention a broad, a broad range of religious beliefs, not, not espouse them, I think that's appropriate myself, you know? I mean, I, I just, I don't know, as a person that's been in a lot of meetings with a lot of different people around the world, you know, I, maybe I'm just sensitive about that, but, but, but the, and we have a lot of guests, and we have a lot of people who come in here that are from businesses, and businesses from other countries, so, one that's right on the, on the table right now. And I just would, would hate for people, anybody, to feel pressured or, or not agree with, with what we think about on our, you know, and, and based on the history of our country, personally, not my own personal beliefs, because one of my reasons for being on this committee is, is to be very objective and not to, not to espouse my personal beliefs. And so, so I, I feel like the more, the more universal we can be in our blessings, it, it brings people in and doesn't put them out. And to me, I don't, and I don't know how to do that. I'm not saying I'm an expert theologian here.
Neither do I.
No, and I know, we do, we all feel the same way. But, but, but I think, you know, if there's anything that makes it more universal, if there's any way we can, we can seek the guidance of maybe some of our, our theologians from our town, people from the town, and then the different churches, and that, I bet they have a, a prayer that's pretty cool, that, that makes everybody feel pretty good. I'm, I'm just guessing on that, because, I mean, they do it all over the world, they, they, they speak in a more general fashion, and that's all I'm saying. It's hard for me to say anything at all, to tell you the truth, but it, but it's, it's true to me.
Terry?
Well, I can see how we could start the meeting with a moment of reflection, silent reflection, where everybody, you know, seeks whatever, seeking they seek, in order to reflect on what we're going to be doing today, and that we do it, you know, in the highest standards and that type of thing, but, you know, avoid any specific verbiage, but just do a moment of reflection, where we have a quiet moment of reflection.
The two bodies that appoint us, half of us are appointed from the city, half of us are appointed from the fiscal court. Both of those bodies open their meetings with prayer. And they certainly do business for the city and the county. So I don't know what that, how we're different from them.
I wonder, as the demographics may change in our community, such that perhaps at some point Christianity may not be the prevailing for the, for the majority, we need to be aware that someday, somebody else may be on this commission who shares a different belief and will want to say a prayer in that regard.
Another, another thing is, I don't have any, I don't care if there's one person in town that's different, it doesn't matter how many. To me, it matters the fact that people, people have different views, and this is why one of the prevailing problems in America today that is nationally being discussed, "So why shouldn't we do it in Danville, Kentucky?" Because it's easy not to. I, I don't know, I, I'm just, you know, that's all, I, and, and I think anybody who knows me, I've, I've performed and played in every type of church, every type of synagogue in this world, and, and, and I feel, I feel the, the need myself to, no matter what I believe, it, it doesn't matter what I believe.
I think the Supreme Court themselves summed it up pretty well, if I can quote from those lines, "It's opening of sessions of legislative and other deliberative public bodies with prayer is deeply embedded in the history and tradition of this country." I think they said it all. Any comments from the audience on this issue? We'd certainly like to hear your thoughts. Yes, ma'am?
You want me to come up?
If you would.
Yes, he can.
I don't give you permission. No, just very quickly, I'm not against having a prayer at the beginning. I think it's appropriate, and it doesn't have to be a moment of silence, and I like the things that Jerry says, so I'm fine with that. I just think it's good not to men, it would be better not to mention a certain religion. I mean, most of us sitting in this room probably are Christians, and we're used to saying, and I'm just going to come out and say it, "In Jesus' name." I think that's where we could make, not, if we don't, if Jerry didn't, I mean, again, I'll just say what I think, if Jerry didn't say that, then I think it, it, everything he says is very appropriate, but that does highlight one particular religion. is very appropriate, but that does highlight one particular religion, and maybe that would help.
Any other comments from the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I have one if the audience doesn't.
Yes, Henry.
I don't know that this needs to be a part of the motion. I frankly don't know that there needs to be a motion on this matter. I think the discussion's productive enough. But what Ms. Touchstone highlighted, one particular phrase she used, I think is something that echoed in the courts, and that's that we don't want there to be any price for admission of doing business with us. So just as we're wrapping this up, we should think about maybe not saying, "Please bow your heads" or anything like that, if that, that's something that's worth considering.
Any other comments? Susie has made the motion, it's been seconded, so we will vote on that as a matter of formality as to whether we continue with the prayer or not prior to calling the meeting to order?
Maybe one more, I think we can have the prayer. I think we're discussing what's in it. You know, I don't think anybody, I don't know, maybe some people are opposed to it altogether, I'm not, okay, personally, but we're just, I think we're really voting, we need to be voting on if it has a certain content or not, not the fact that we have it or not. I think we all, does anybody not agree that we should be doing something in the beginning? I like it, but I'm not.
We have to vote on the question.
Okay.
But you could modify it if you wanted, Mr. Walton.
And I don't know how we, I don't know how we control that.
Yeah.
Yeah. David, how you vote on this?
I vote to keep it the same.
Vince?
You mean the same, exactly the same?
Vince, how do you vote on the motion?
I vote against.
Wendy?
Four.
Jeff?
In favor.
Susie?
In favor.
Terry?
Against.
Against? Very bad. Against? Jim?
In favor.
Favor. You got that, Wendy? I vote four. Wendy, I'm sorry, Jenny, I named my name, excuse me.
Four to three, ready?
Yes. Six to three.
Six to three, motion passes. Any other new business or good for the order? Nothing? Here, motion adjourned, David Muswe adjourned, Wendy seconds, all in favor, vote unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.